Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, January 9, 2014. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Here.
Counselor Camardo?
Here.
Counselor Cuddy?
Here.
Counselor Azika?
Here.
Mayor Quill?
Here. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance stands by for the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. We will start out with our public to be heard, and clerk, if you would read our rules and regulations.
At this time, we will open the public-to-be-heard portion of the council meeting. As a reminder, pursuant to City Council Rules of Procedure, prior to addressing council, speakers are asked to state their name, address, and affiliation, if any. All comments should be addressed to the entire council and not to individual staff members. Your remarks must be limited to three minutes and concern only issues involving the city council, city government, or matters of general city concern. Issues involving specific employees of the city should be directed to the city manager outside of the meeting. All speakers before council will observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy, personal, tax, or abusive language will be ruled out of order.
Thank you. This time, is there anyone desiring to be heard? Mr. Davis?
Norm Davis, Nebula Housing Commission. On behalf of my commission, again, I want to offer my congratulations to Counselor Cuddy and Counselor McCormick. May all your decisions be made out of the inspiration of our God, and our commission is looking forward to working with you in various endeavors throughout the city. Again, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anyone else desiring to be heard?
Ron Quill, Case Avenue, Chairman of the Salvation RB Board. Now that Thanksgiving and Christmas and the holidays are over, I want to remind people to please donate to the food pantries. We think about the people during the holidays, but then, as the weather remains cold, as it has been, and people are short a little bit of food, it's important to make sure we take care of our fellow Arburnians and through all the communities. There's multiple numbers of food pantries in the area. You can donate to any one of the food pantries. I'm not looking for us in particular, but please feel welcome to do it. One single item of non-perishable per person in your household, once a month, will feed a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quill. Anyone else desiring to be heard this evening? No one? Very well, we'll close that portion of our meeting, and we'll move along to the approval of meeting minutes from December 19, 2013. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor Azika. Discussion, counsel? Please call the roll.
Counselor McCormick?
I'm not sure if I should vote on them.
Probably best abstain because you did not.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll abstain.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Abstain.
Counselor Azika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie.
Counselor, that'd be the last time you get to abstain.
No, I've got one more to go.
One more. You're correct, Counselor. Public announcements, or presentations and proclamations, excuse me.
None.
Public announcements.
Yes, I have one. From the office of Governor Cuomo, you are cordially invited to attend a presentation of 2014 State of the State, Governor Andrew M. Cuomo, presented by Commissioner Brian Stratton, Director of the New York State Canal Corporation, Friday, January 10, at 12:00 p.m., Auburn City Council Chambers, Memorial City Hall, 24 South Street, Auburn, New York.
Is it?
Yes.
Thank you. City managers' report?
I have a few items, Mayor. Counselors, I put a manila folder with some handouts in it in front of you, so I'm just going to refer to a few of those. The first one is a road improvement program report for the work completed under the program you authorized for this year. It summarizes the streets that were worked on and the starting and ending points on those streets, as well as some statistics on the amount of paving that was done and curb installation and other items. This was an item, I know Counselor Camardo, you requested, so-
Thank you.
-we have this for you. And if you have any questions, as you look at that, I know the Lupin is available to respond. The second item in your folder, and there should be a number two on it, it's a single page, is in regard to the radio 911 system that was installed and that the city committed to pay $754,758.93 to Quga County for our share of supporting that system. To date, we've paid $345,000. That's money that's been reimbursed to the city. Originally, when the project was conceived, it was believed that the city would receive reimbursement from Sprint Nextel and through the sale of surplus radios in an amount to cover the entire $754,000. Unfortunately, that's not the case. So we presently owe Quga County $409,758.93. They have been persistent in asking me about when that payment would be made. It's a large payment, and it's one that we really couldn't make this year. What I've proposed are a number of things to the county, the last of which was what's in front of you tonight, and that is a payment of $50,000 each quarter beginning next month until it's paid off. So, in essence, eight payments. We're proposing this be a no-interest kind of a situation, and it would require, in all likelihood, a modification of the existing MOU between us and the county. So I wanted to put that out. The county obviously would have to accept this, have some indication that it might be acceptable to them. So I'm interested in any input, comments, before I bring this back as a resolution for the council to consider.
I have a couple of comments, Doug, if I could. Number one, how much did you get from Sprint Nextel for reimbursement?
I'd have to get you the breakout on it.
Could you please on that?
It was in the $250,000 range.
And how come the large discrepancy? What was- could you give us some backup information on that when you find out?
I wasn't here when all this was put together, but the initial numbers showed us getting quite a lot of money for the radios. And as we've learned, the radio technology has evolved, the brand of radio that we had, another company took it over, so people are hesitant to buy what has now become an off-brand radio. So we didn't get the amount of money that we expected to get for the brand-new equipment. That's the primary issue.
I guess my question is, who gave you the estimates of getting this $754,000 paid for? Where'd that come from? Our local?
We had an individual working for the city. I don't know where he got it. He's no longer with the city.
Could you give us some background and some information on that, please? Some backup information when you get a chance to compile that?
Okay.
And also, where are you planning on getting the money from for this $50,000 a quarter?
We'll take it out of our current reserves.
It'll come out of fund balance.
Yeah.
So Doug, you're going to give us a breakdown of what was reimbursed?
Yeah, I can do that.
And if you can come up with, to piggyback onto Counselor John, I'd like to get as much of the background information as that we possibly can. I had discussion with this before with one of the individuals, and part of the problem was with how the, I'm going to say, the purchase specifications were written. I'd like to see a copy of those for myself.
Mr. Selby, just to get some background, approximately what year was this deal made?
Four years ago.
Was it four years ago?
Four years ago. That's when it started. Okay. Thank you.
It's complicated, as I look back at the history. There's a briefing report, I'll dig that up, and it kind of summarizes everything, but the city was proceeding independently on replacing its radio system. And then, apparently, through some grants or incentives or other guidance, the city joined with the county in more of a regional approach for the 911 system. So I'll get you that information.
And you said the word persistent. How persistent?
Extremely. I'm sorry, jumping in.
It's true. I had another email today, so-
Would this be a topic of conversation for when we meet with the county? Because I know, the other night, I went to the inauguration of the new members, and they were asking me about when a meeting would be set. And I think they're either going to call you or the mayor about when setting up a meeting between the city and the county-
Right.
...for some topics, and maybe this needs to be a topic of conversation between both
We can put it on the agenda. I just know that, from everything that I've heard and the discussions I've had with the county administrator and the chairman, they want the money.
I understand they want the money, but we have a problem with coming up with the money is what the real problem is. So I think we should have some further talks with them before we actually go ahead and try to come up with a resolution, is, I guess, what my point is.
The third item that's in your folder has a number three on it, and it's just a draft of a new format for our meeting agendas. Kind of modernizes the agenda. At the top is the "Welcome to the Public" and basically the rules for public comment, and that's followed by the agenda. And then at the bottom, we've put contact information, the address of City Hall, and then the dates on which the council meetings rebroadcast on Verizon, Philes, and Time Warner. So if you have any thoughts, ideas on this, let me know, and we can-
Doug, I like the front part, "Welcome to the City." I think that explains the come-to-the-podium. I just think maybe that could be a little darker. I don't know if that's going to be a darker draft or whatever, so people can see that. But I like that first paragraph. I think that's good to have that. It's been missing in the past, but I think that's a good area to give them the direction on how they come to the podium and speak, and what their limit is, and so on and so forth. And especially turning off the cell phone.
Doug, I got one more suggestion, is that we take advantage of these screens and put the agendas up on the screen, plus any packet documents, so that anyone here out there in the audience who doesn't have, pick up a package, or even out there, if it's even visible on the video, so that everything that we discuss is full out and available.
Very timely comment, because this evening, we're going to put something on the screen in connection with the new electronic agenda, so we'll kind of try it out tonight a little bit.
That's been around for decades now.
Yeah.
Not for us.
The last thing I want to do is just acknowledge our field workers who worked through this bitter, cold water department, trash collection, streets. They all worked very hard during the sub-zero weather. They really, in true DPW fashion, they were out there working and serving the public, and they didn't take shelter like some did in nearby jurisdiction. They were out doing their jobs, so.
Yeah, I seen that email that was sent out that basically tickled this off, and as soon as I seen it, I responded to it in kind, and Anthony commented that it was a good, well-received message.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. The budget document, is it for later on?
Yeah, that's later.
Okay, thank you. Seek resolution?
None.
Ordinances?
None.
Resolution. Change order resolution number one of 2014, authorizing change order number one for the 2013 road program contract number two. We have a sponsor. Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor McCormick. I have McCormick, I have McNabb, and I have McDonald in my mind, so I-
Isn't it wonderful?
I certainly don't want to call you Debbie, but Counselor McCormick.
Thank you.
Change order resolution number one of 2014 by Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor McCormick. Whereas, on July 2, 2013, the Auburn City Council approved bond ordinance number six of 2013, which authorized the issuance of $2,500,000 in serial bonds to fund the 2013 road improvement program. And whereas, City Council awarded, resolution number 75 of 2013 authorized the award of the 2013 road program contract to Barrett Paving Materials, Inc., in the amount of And change order number one, in the amount of $11,414.51, is now required to order to compensate the contract for work completed in order to close out this contract. Now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby approve change order number one for the 2013 road program contract number two, in the amount of $11,414.51, in order to pay Barrett Paving Materials, Inc., in that amount, and the payment is to be charged to account number HA5110-440-GZ.
Counselor, Mr. Lupin is here with us. If there's any questions, I'm sure either himself or Mr. Selby can fill in the answers.
I just have a question for Doug. Out of the $2.5 million that we bonded for, how much was actually spent on the program?
Bill's stepping up, he'll probably be able to tell you.
Excuse me, Counselor, what did you say?
Out of the original $2.5 million that we bonded for the road program, how much was actually spent?
Actually, we have a carryover of a few streets of about $230,000, so we have about $230,000 for streets that are going to be done this year out of last year's program. That's about all that hasn't been spent.
So my point being is, there's enough in the bond to pay for this $11,000?
Of course there is, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, Bill, before you sit down, it's only about a 5.2% overage, so it's well below the radar here.
You remember, this was a patch contract?
Yes.
And toward the end of the contract, we did a lot of extra patches over on State Street in Conduction with the York Street Reconstruction Project.
Right.
So we wanted to take advantage of that contract and finish that out. So we just finished that up, and it just happened to be about $11,000 more than originally was bonded. We were targeting around $250,000 initially for the patches, so this was a good program for us.
Yeah, I think it's well within the acceptable limits here. I mean, I have no problem with this.
Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Azika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie.
Agreement resolution number two of 2014, authorizing the city manager enter into an agreement with Nova Solutions for Electronic Meeting Management Solutions software. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor McCormick, seconded by Counselor Cuddy.
Agreement resolution number two of 2014 by Counselor McCormick, seconded by Counselor Cuddy. Whereas, in preparation for planning the 2013-2014 city budget, city staff presented council with information regarding the financial benefits and efficiency improvements of implementing a paperless agenda process. And whereas, council agreed that changing the current labor-intensive, paper-heavy agenda process would be more cost-effective and would help streamline the process. Changing to more effective, time-saving procedures that make economical and practical sense are necessary to maintain operations. And whereas, since then, the city clerk's office and city staff have worked in a pilot program with Nova Solutions. The pilot program has given staff the opportunity to be trained and utilize this system at no cost to the city and no impact to council or the public. For the last 10 months, we have produced a paper agenda for council and the public while adapting to the paperless agenda process internally. And whereas, staff is pleased with Nova Solutions product, training, and support, and have become comfortable process without risk to the city. The final steps to becoming totally paperless and partnering with Nova will be to obtain authorization from council to move forward and to introduce a process to council and the public. And now therefore be it resolved that the city manager is authorized to enter into an agreement with Nova Solutions of Tampa, Florida, $4,200 for the subscription fee, and $750 for the one-time setup service, for a total of $4,950 to be charged to the city clerk department services account, A1410 dot zero, or four zero, four zero. Sorry about that.
Mr. Selby?
Mayor, we're fortunate to have our former city clerk with us this evening, and she worked diligently on this, and she's graciously said she'd be happy to kind of give a short presentation on this. If you recall, we discussed this, as the resolution said, and council wanted us to try it. It's been a success. We've had some learning curves to overcome, but we're using it now, and it's kind of transparent, because what you see in front of you each evening looks very much like what we had before. But as we implement this, we can change that, and we can start to make this available electronically to each member of council and the public.
Doug, other than the one-time setup fee here, is there any other fees associated with this that are ongoing?
I believe that's the only fee. And then annually, we'll pay a license-
The annual subscription, obviously, is for upgrades in the software and support.
I understand that. I was looking to make sure that there wasn't any other fees associated with this.
I think the annual would be about the-
The only one?
Yeah. And there's add, we don't, I think if we wanted to add other options-
Counselor, would you pull that microphone?
I'm sorry. If we wanted to add other things to it, we could do that too, but until we get used to this, I think, and once you see what it does. And Christina and Jenny are here. They've been the primary, a few of the primary people that have also, what we do is, everybody does their own agenda items, pretty much, now. So that takes away the need for, I hate to say, support people, but so we put it into this system. And I'm just going to show you this part here, from our own desks, our own office, we enter items in here. Now I got to sign in again. Each of us can sign in, anyone that has an item to put into the agenda for the previous week. We meet on Mondays to plan the agenda for the following week. So if someone had an agenda item, they would go in and pick what it is. Usually, it's a resolution, so we'd select resolution, we'd create a new item, and we'd put the title of whatever it is here, like tonight, a council resolution to authorize payment of this, or agreement resolution, or a bond ordinance, that kind of thing. And then all these things here, it would be from the city manager's office, to Honorable Mayor, members of council, and the date. And down here, we would put in the text of it, and we can cut and paste from Word documents, put in the financial impact, as we do in any other memo. Most of what you see at your desk today, or people see at home online, is what we've produced through this over the last 10 months. So then we would save the document, and the process goes on in each department that has something for the agenda. And we save, and we save, then everything, once you save and exit, it goes through another process, where it goes to the manager's office, to Mr. Rossi's office. So it's approved, it's fine-tuned. If it needs to be changed, edited, numbers change, or anything that changes with the material that's sent out, it can be fixed, or I shouldn't say fixed, but corrected or edited, right there. You don't have to go back and forth and run down the hall and make copies and throw them out and shred things. It's all done without the use of making copies and wasting a lot of time. Chime in anytime if I'm off-base or anything like that. So it's really saving a lot of time, a lot of steps, a lot of paper. So if you get out of here, what we end up is, without going through the gory details of it, is we end up, at the end of the week, ideally, we wanted to do it on Thursday afternoon, is have everything done. It's approved by the manager and ready to go to council on Thursday afternoon. Typically, for the last, so I don't know, 50 years, on Friday afternoon, city council has been getting their council packets delivered to them at home, so they could have it over the weekend to prepare for the next week. What we'll do now is, they'll be able to access this online and not have to have the paper. And these dates here are meeting dates, so it'll have a history, and this is something that will have our logo, this will be accessible to the public also. And once we've paid our bill, we'll be able to search, anybody, anyone, city council, citizens, anyone with access to the internet, we'll be able to search, word search, anything we've done in the past, so that if you really liked something we did, or really didn't like something we did back on November 21st, but you don't know it was November 21st, but all you can remember is that Ron Quill talked about turkeys on the 21st. You can type in turkey, and all the times that Ron talked about turkeys will, all the meetings will show up. It's a pretty good example. It's not controversial, right? So that's the beauty of it. And for a more serious thing, if it's a resolution relating to a sidewalk in your neighborhood, or some kind of a program that you're really interested in, or a city councilor has a favorite project that they really want to get all the information on, over time, this is going to build a great database of information that you won't have to call the city clerk or Jenny up in planning. You'll be able to access this information at home, in your office, wherever you go. You'll be able to get to what you'll need to get to all by yourself. Which, not that we don't want to help you, but it's nicer to do it by yourself. So over here are all PDF documents, and today is the 9th, so that should pop up if all goes well. There it is. So our meeting for today, if you were at home, this would come up.
No, it doesn't.
Now, this is a story of our life here. There. If we were live as far as 100% with Nova, these would be links, and we would be able to click on them, and these documents would pop up. But in lieu of that, they're just attached here as one big, long document. So everything that's in our packet today is right here online. So as we get these prepared at home tonight, ideally, we could go home tonight and look up what's on the agenda for next week. Isn't that great?
Counselor? Is there a record of how the votes went? And will that be attached to the resolution, or how will that be?
That won't be yet. That module is included with this. Let's see if I go back here.
Should be able to edit it just as a text, as a Word document, then?
I can't hear what he's saying.
I don't see any problem with that. You just edit the document as a Word document and put in the votes.
These aren't-
I don't want to-
You can edit PDFs.
I don't want it to be edited. I want the track record.
Well, what we'll be able to do is, there's a, you can't see it here, but there's a minutes. Once the minutes are done, they'll be right next to it. There'll be a link right next to this, not next to the page, on the same page, and the minutes will be uploaded as they're done, and you'll be able to see the minutes right next to these agendas. So you'll be able to see them as well. But we haven't even gone to that end of it. The clerk's office will get into that, but we haven't crossed that yet. But you'll be able to access how the votes went and all of that easily. It'll all be on our website. It'll integrate really easily. We won't have to pay for anything extra to get there. It's just like another link. So I don't know if I explain that in as exciting way as the salesperson would. Do you have any, as users? No?
I have a question, Counselor. We talked about this a couple weeks ago, the recap, as we do, we have it every week. I want to make sure that the items stay on the recap until they're been answered or the council's satisfied with the end result, because we move on from subject to subject every week, and sometimes we don't go back and handle the subjects that we left on the recap from the week before. So would this be able to keep a record of what's on the recap and keep it updated, so that if an item's still on there, that we can have it go back to?
You could include the recap items in the minutes, I suppose. That would keep them on the-
I'm just trying to think if this could be incorporated with that.
Well, if you put the recap from last week into the packet for the following week, we do that now, don't we? I don't know. Do you get the recap- Do you get the recap in your packet?
No recap today.
We haven't gotten a recap in a while, that's what I'm saying. We just, it just hasn't, I haven't seen it, so...
The only place to go would be in the minutes?
Right.
In the minutes or in the packet? It used to go in the packet.
Yeah. So that we're on top of it and it's just not a lost item and I like to try to stay on top of these things if possible.
The other thing I see as a problem is that right now, the city website isn't that robust anyhow. It seems to have some troubles just navigating in the pages as it is. It's not the connection or the connectivity of the line. Got a high-speed connection and it does not respond very well quite often. I'm concerned if we have a number of hits on this website, it's going to make the problem even worse. So we may have to upgrade the server capabilities here in-house.
This is hosted on their servers, so this is not through our server. We'll have a link.
There's just a link on our website then.
We get quite a few, we're working with Doug, we have the statistics on our website on what gets the most hits, like the streamlined recreation pages. We get quite a bit of traffic on our website considering, and those pages are pretty heavily hit, but we don't have a spreadsheet or anything like that prepared, but...
So I got the obvious question here is, Doug, what are the actual cost savings here? In the background notice, I see nothing as far as a cost breakdown, other than, you know, we've got basically an invoice. I don't see any cost analysis that shows that this is going to actually save us any money.
We did that in the initial presentation. I don't have that with me.
I have that. I can give you a copy. We did it back in October.
Yeah.
I did a PowerPoint presentation. It was about $50,000 savings of various different copyings, mostly a lot of paper and people power, hours, labor saved. And all the dollars and the hours were based on standards. It wasn't that I went and measured things here. It was industry standards and they measured, we filled in the blanks, like how many hours. When the manager had a secretary, we asked her to give us estimates of how long it took her to make copies.
Was this a toolbox that they offered to help you decide on this?
We presented it to council.
No, Counselor Zika mentioned having the information live on the projector. Would that happen once Novus is seated?
We'd like to try that, yeah. I've worked in places where that is done, where the items come up. We have to figure out how to interface when we've got another presentation going on or something, but I think what you're seeing here is kind of an example of what we can do. We'll be able to pop up the actual resolution, any backup material, those kind of things. Probably will require some kind of, somebody at the computer most of the time to keep us current on which page we're looking at.
Would each user be required to create a username and password?
I think, yeah, go ahead, Debbie.
Well, council, each of us, or...
No, I'm talking about the public.
Oh, no, the public wouldn't. They just would click on, it would be, just click on it and they would be able to see the agenda.
Supporting documents as well?
Pardon?
And the supporting documents as well?
Everything they see now, anything in the agenda packet. But council would have their own login, so that you can make notes. It'd be your own private, no one would see what you, if you have to make notes or do whatever you need to do within the confines of your signed-in link, you can do whatever you need to do. And we'll be talking about the hardware that you're going to get. Each of us will have, we're not sure whether you're going to get a laptop, or not a laptop, a notebook, or which device it'll be at, I guess, if it's an iPad or whichever. The county uses iPads. And Linda, I guess we're going to talk to Linda about what's going to work right, whether it's, because the codes office is going to use notebooks with their new software. So whatever that is, then council will get trained. And the Novus people have offered, they will do a training live here, live meaning a webinar, at a council meeting, so that any of us at council that are willing, we could train so that the people at home can watch us be trained, but see what's going on and see how it works. But after that, we can be, work on it, aside from that during the day or after hours or whatever, just to see what we do.
So was the cost roll-up inclusive of purchasing either laptops or tablet PCs?
Is it inclusive of that?
Yes.
No, that's extra.
I think we need a roll-up for the entire thing here before we move forward on this, at least if it's going to require, or if the city's going to be purchasing this hardware for us in the line of tablet PCs or iPads or whatever the application of the hardware is, we need to know what the overall costs and that has to be included here as well.
It's been budgeted for, all of it.
I still would like to see the costs. I'm not opposed to this, in fact, I'm very much a proponent of it, but I would just like to see the cost comparisons.
But we don't have to go with tablets and things like that down the road, right? This is just to get us going into the...
Right.
Counselor?
Yes.
No, no, I'm Counselor McCormick, I'm addressing, so. We have some young students with us and they're probably wondering what all these old men and women worried about computers for. We'll probably have it back at a later session to give us in the classes, so...
Well, they get them for Christmas.
Get them for Christmas, yeah. Further discussion? Clerk, if you'll call a roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Zika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie.
Agreement Resolution Number Three of 2014 authorizing a supplemental agreement with CHA Consulting, Inc. for redevelopment plans under the U.S. EPA Brownfield Program. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor Cuddy.
Agreement Resolution Number Three of 2014 by Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor Cuddy. Whereas the City of Auburn has been awarded two U.S. Environmental Protection Agency EPA Brownfield Assessment Grants in the amounts of $200,000 for hazardous contaminants and $200,000 for petroleum contaminants. And whereas, the City of Auburn has successfully completed a community participatory process that resulted in the identification of 21 hazardous and petroleum brownfield sites within the City of Auburn, as well as the completion of 13 Phase One environmental site assessments and nine Phase Two environmental site assessments. And whereas, Agreement Resolution Number Forty of 2011 authorized expenditure of $16,850 for completion of the site inventory, community participatory, and preliminary redevelopment planning tasks. And whereas, through the preliminary redevelopment planning process, certain brownfield sites were identified that would benefit from site-specific redevelopment plans, which requires a supplemental agreement in the amount of $7,000 for petroleum contaminated sites and $26,100 for hazardous contaminated sites. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Auburn, New York. One, that the Auburn City Council does hereby authorize a supplemental agreement with CHA Consulting, Inc. for site-specific redevelopment plans for a cost of $7,800 for petroleum contaminated sites and $26,100 for hazardous contaminated sites. And two, that Agreement Resolution Number Three of 2014 will cost an aggregate amount of $33,900 and will be charged to the designated capital account entitled Downtown Brownfield Program Number HA8020.440.GC. Three, that this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its approval and adoption.
City manager or Christina and Jenny, someone want to break this down in a little simpler English for all of us, please, whomever?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is the last step in our four-year Brownfield Program that we have been working on here in the city. What you have before you are the proposed scope of services that CHA is planning on working on as our last stop in this program. There are three sites in particular that we really would like to work on. 1 to 15 Pulaski Street, which is a petroleum contaminated site that's owned by the city. There is interest for redevelopment for that site. We'd like to continue and nurture that interest to hopefully sell that property as soon as we kind of get that back on the tax rolls. The other two are 16 South Street and 41 to 55 Washington Street. Both of these are hazardous contaminated brownfield sites. One is which owned by Schein's Theater, the Arts Council, and the other one is the city-owned property for Donna McCarthy. So both of which have redevelopment potential and so those are the three we really would like to focus on. If there's other interest in the other sites that are listed, we want to make sure they were at least included in the scope of work, all of which have had the Phase Two environmental site analysis completed.
Counselor Camardo?
Is there any cost to the city on these two? They're both covered under grants.
Yep. This is 100% funded grant program.
And do you have the final outcome of the Phase Two on the Donna McCarthy site? Or can we get a copy and see how?
I don't know if that one is done yet, Council. I know the draft is completed. EPA has been reviewing them, so I'd have to check the city website. We have been posting them when we do get them approved, so...
Could you let me know?
Yeah, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Christina, I inquired about some of the costing here. On the petroleum sites, the hourly rate here goes from 150 to about 156, but then there's much more variation on the hazardous sites. In fact, it goes from as low as about $140 per hour to about 154. Is there a different level of skill sets that are going to be performing these tasks or the same set of individuals?
Yes, your observation is correct. So the hazardous sites, one of the tasks has to deal with doing a building structural evaluation, so we will be paying for an individual that is familiar with building construction and that individual probably has a higher hourly rate than the senior planner or planner associate at the company who will be helping us with the general public participation and document writing and support.
And under the task, Task Six, under Redevelopment Options, in the, this is on the South Street and Washington Street portions, it talks about CH's structural engineering review, building, review the proposed building reuse options and to provide a verbal assessment. I don't like that word verbal. I think I expressed that to you already. Anything that we have, since given the fact that we're paying three grand for that step, I would prefer that this word verbal be struck and written, be put in there. I do not want to have a verbal report that requires somebody to take notes and, you know, the written word is always there. The spoken word is just in the air, so...
And I did get clarification on that, because I know you had questions about that. The interpretation that I received from the consultant was there would be, I think they meant dialogue there between them and the Arts Council, and then below that, it talks about a summary of all of the information that's gathered and the redevelopment options. It'll all be put together in a written document. We have to provide that to EPA, so...
I understand. And then the other thing is, the South Street building is basically on the historic preservation list, so given that, the building reuse options are basically somewhat controlled by the state office there. So I understand that there are some things you can do to widen the reuse if it means actual preservation, so I just would like to, you know, I would like to see these reports and then, of course, obviously, the one on the Pulaski Street property because of the interest. I'd like to see that and as well as the Washington Street back on the rolls, if possible.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah. Thank you, Christina.
Sure, thank you.
Clerk, if you'll call a roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Zika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie.
Gotta just skip this next one, it's not important, is it? Whatever. Agreement Resolution Number Four of 2014 amending the city manager's employment contract. Do we have a sponsor? No sponsor? Counselor Cuddy, second. Counselor McCormick?
Agreement Resolution Number Four of 2014 by Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor McCormick. Whereas, the City of Auburn is party to an employment contract dated August 25, 2011, with Douglas A. Selby, whereby Mr. Selby is employed as a city manager of the City of Auburn. And whereas, in the aforementioned Contract Section Three, Mr. Selby is entitled to a cost of living salary increase effective annually on January 1st if he receives a satisfactory job performance evaluation from city council prior to December 25th of the preceding year. And whereas, Mr. Selby received a satisfactory job performance evaluation by a majority of the city councillors prior to December 25, 2013. And whereas, Mr. Selby's base salary for calendar year 2013 was $112,000. And whereas, the agreed cost of living adjustment here and after COLA index as computed by the U.S. Social Security Administration and published in the Wall Street Journal for calendar year 2014 is 1.5%. And whereas, applying the aforementioned 1.5% COLA to Mr. Selby's $112,000 base salary would otherwise allow him a $1,680 per year salary increase in 2014 per his Employment Contract Section Number Three. And whereas, Mr. Selby has asked city council not to give him a raise in pay, but to instead defer the said $1,680 to a severance fund to be paid to Mr. Selby when his employment with the city ends or terminates. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Auburn is authorized to create a severance fund for Mr. Selby and fund it for calendar year 2014 with whatever pay raise he would have otherwise been entitled to under his employment contract dated August 25, 2011. And therefore, be it resolved that the aforementioned severance fund proceeds shall be paid to the city, by the city, to Mr. Selby whenever his employment with the city as city manager ends or is terminated. And be it further resolved that the amount to be placed into the said severance fund for calendar year 2014 shall be $1,680 or a prorate apportion, therefore, should Mr. Selby's employment with the city end or be terminated prior to December 31, 2014. And be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute an amendment to Mr. Selby's August 25, 2011 employment contract, said amendment to be consistent with the terms and provisions of this resolution.
Mr. Rossi, this is pretty much self-explanatory, but is there anything you feel you would want to add from the legal end of it?
No, this is exactly the same thing that we did about a year ago. It's very standard according to the employment agreement that we have.
Counselor Camardo?
Mayor, members of council, I wish the city was in a situation where we had money to give out raises, where we had money to save some of the positions that were lost due to the budget cuts this past year, but I have a very difficult situation here in front of us, that we're going to give out a raise to an individual and how do we go out and tell our bargaining units that we don't have any money, that we're having difficult times and we need them to make concessions? How do we face the firemen who were laid off last year, that were laid off by a majority of this council? So I have a very difficult time supporting this. People will say it's only $1,680. People will say it's only $1,680, but I'm more concerned on the message it sends. It's sending a message that we're giving out a raise, and unfortunately, we can't afford to give out any raises, that we're going to be asking for more concessions this year. The city's in a very difficult financial situation. I was, I'm a member of the Audit Committee, I met with the Audit Committee yesterday. The city is going to be facing some very difficult times. We have less than $3 million left in our fund balance, rising costs, demographics are suffering in the area, we're losing people, they're moving out of the area. So unfortunately, I wish that we're in a better situation, but this is an item that I'm not going to be able to support.
Mr. Rossi?
Just one other item, Counsel, and I'm sure everyone understands your position. But approximately a year ago, Mr. Selby forego, he did forego an over $4,000 increase in his base salary. So that should be looked at in that light also. And you're right, it's going to be points that have to be addressed with upcoming contract talks with the union.
Counselor McCormick.
A question, it's, according to this, it's, Mr. Selby is not taking a raise, but he's deferring it. Can you explain that?
Well, in other words, he's not going to be paid now.
Okay.
But at some point in time, whenever his contract expires or terminates, or any other agreement is made, it may be paid at that time.
And the city needs to set that money aside because it is going to be a liability the city will someday have to pay out.
Right.
So that is money set aside.
Counselor Rizika.
Yes, well, in regards to this, it is a deferred payment. However, this was within the contractual agreement that we made with the city manager. He did forego a 4% pay raise, which this council did for the last two years for itself. I will support this because we have to live up to our current contractual agreement. I fully understand your position, and you're correct. It is maybe a message that may be transmitted, but however, contracts are up for negotiation.
Contracts are, I'm sorry.
Some of these, a lot of these contracts are up for negotiation.
All of our contracts.
I understand that, but I'm saying that their current contracts for the unions are up for negotiation. So that's, that's what's going to set.
Then we're going to be asking those, every one of those bargaining units, if I can speak here, is for concessions.
Sure.
Because we can't afford to give out any raises, because unfortunately, we're in a very difficult financial situation that I hope we can get out of, and I hope with everybody on board, we can move this ship around and have it move in a different direction. But it's going to take some work, and it's going to take some sacrifice by everybody involved.
And I sympathize with your point, and I can, I clearly see it. But again, like I say, I'm falling back onto the agreement that we currently do have with our city manager.
That's fine.
We have to, and.
We still have an opportunity to vote on it.
I understand that.
And either affirm it or disaffirm it, so if not, it would be an.
Well, if not, the only thing you're.
If not, Counselor, it would be an automatic increase, and we wouldn't have an opportunity to vote on it. So we do have a chance to vote on it. I'm expressing my views on it, and that's.
Well, it would only be a deferral, although if this gets turned down, it would just be a pay raise anyhow, is what I'm understanding.
Counselor Cuddy.
It would have to be affirmed by council.
If I may, this, this in a way looks, seems like a concession in and of itself, so that's why I'm going to support it, because it understands our current financial woes, and it's something that we do not have to pay now, but is deferred for the future. And given Mr. Selby's satisfactory job performance, I believe that if this is what he wishes to do with, to defer this money, I am going to agree with this.
Counselor, Counselor McCormick, I'll address you, sir. I understand, and I know what you're trying to say, but at the same time, the city manager knows more than any of us as to the financial status of the city and what has to be done. At the same time, we have a contractual obligation that we have to fulfill, so I, I'm not making Mr. Selby the bad guy here. We agree to this as a council, and your point is well taken. It's well taken. But it's contractually agreed to, and I would say move it forward.
I'm not, I don't want to make anybody the bad guy, sort of.
Not accusing you of that, Counsel.
I wish we had money to give out raises across the board, but the facts are the facts, and this financial situation is something that we can't, we need to justify or look at, and we need to be very, very aware of it. So with that said, let's move the question forward.
Anything further? Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor McCormick?
No.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Rizika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie.
Council Resolution Number Five of 2014, Approving Settlement Depending Litigation by FLH Inc., Challenging the Real Property Tax Assessment of the Inn at the Finger Lakes. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor McCormick, seconded by Counselor Cuddy.
Council Resolution Number Five of 2014 by Counselor McCormick, seconded by Counselor Cuddy. Whereas, FLH Inc., owner of the Inn at the Finger Lakes at 15 John Street, Auburn, New York, Tax Map Parcel 116.38-1-42, has brought actions under Article Seven of the Real Property Tax Law, Article Challenging Its Assessment for Tax Years 2010, 2011, 2012, and 2013, and wishes to negotiate an agreeable assessment for 2014 based upon the hotel's income and expenses figures for calendar 2013. And whereas, the City of Auburn has retained the services of Todd Thurston of Syracuse to assist the city in the preparation of a trial appraisal. And whereas, Corporation Council's Office, the Assessor's Office, and Mr. Thurston have participated in settlement discussions with attorneys for FLH Inc. and have reached a tentative settlement. Now therefore be it resolved that the lawsuits brought by FLH are hereby settled by a settlement approved by the Auburn City Council on the following terms. One, that the petitioner's assessment for tax year 2010, 2011 is reduced from $2,688,900 to $2,350,000. Two, that the petitioner's assessment for tax year 2011, 2012 is reduced from $2,688,900 to $2,350,000. Three, that the petitioner's assessment for tax year 2012, 2013 is reduced from $2,688,900 to $2,350,000. Four, that the petitioner's assessment for tax year 2013, 2014 is reduced from $2,688,900 to $2,350,000. Five, that the petitioner's assessment for tax year 2014, 2015 is to be set at $2,099,999. Six, that the parties and their successors in interest waive RPTL 727, and that the settlement for the previous tax years does not bind the parties for tax years 2015 to 2016, 2016 to 2017, or 2017 to 2018. Seven, pursuant to the settlement, FLH Inc. shall be entitled to a tax refund for the four years commencing 2010 to 2011 through 2013, 2014, in the amount of $20,663.51, said payment to be made from account number A991001.
Mr. Rossi?
Your Honor, if this matter went to a final decision by the trial court, our council and the appraiser did agree, after consulting with our assessor, Mr. Burns, that it would be in everyone's best interest to settle it on this basis. There were three parties involved, as far as the city was concerned, being the other authorities would be the county and the school district, who are all impacted by the change in the assessments. They have all entered into an agreement, and they did share in the cost of the proceedings. And everyone believes that this is the best outcome, sure outcome, rather than leave it up to the trial court, which could have come in lower. The other item that's important is that the Inn was entitled to interest for its prior tax payments which were made, and they waived that interest, so that was an economic benefit to the city. And if there are technical items which you'd like to question, we have our assessor, Mike Burns, here tonight, who I'm sure can explain exactly how this settlement works and what the impact is going to be in future years.
Before we get into discussion on this, John, I got some calls today from, and I've talked to at least two legislators, and I see in the paper, the county did not, was not aware of what happened.
It was my understanding that there was a briefing, and I may very well be wrong on that, because Mr. Fusco was to meet with them. And I have discussed that with the mayor, and I don't know if that did in fact happen, and it may not have, but I believe that he did discuss this with their legal counsel. I cannot state, he's been out ill this week, as you know. But I will find out.
Well, the point I think I'm going to make is to make sure that we're in communication with the county and the legislators know of what's happening here, that maybe this be tabled until those answers are, at least they're brought up to speed on what's going on here, because I want to make sure we keep good relations with the county, and, you know, they're not mad because we went ahead and approved this without their knowledge. They're going to be affected by it, so I don't want to hold up the discussion, but I just want people to realize that at the end of the discussion, I want to ask that maybe this be tabled until.
Yeah, well, let's give Mike's explanation.
Yep. At least give them the opportunity.
Well, the original assessment was arrived at back in 2010, based on sales in the marketplace. These folks, after that assessment was arrived at, immediately filed, and the case has been ongoing since 2010. And they claim that they wanted us to take a look at their income and expenses to arrive at a value for the hotel. So we did, over the years. I completed an appraisal on the property with the assistance of Todd Thurston, and their income was fairly stable throughout the years, except for the last year, it took a precipitous drop. And anytime, a settlement is a compromise. We're all compromising in both directions. And they felt their income had dropped, and it was verified, especially this year, by their income and expense statements. So based on that, if we had gone to trial, the track record of the court is that they usually split the difference on these, in these cases. And an appraisal is always an opinion. It's a competent interpretation of the facts. So they're going to have an appraiser on their side come in, probably at a lower number than me, and the court would probably split the difference. And if they split the difference, we would probably be worse off than we are with the settlement that we all worked so hard to gain. Andy Fusco worked extremely hard on this. There was a lot of phone calls, a lot of meetings, a lot of verification of the income in order to arrive at this, and I believe it's a fair settlement.
Mike, now I got to ask you a couple of questions. You say that their income dropped off this year, correct?
Yes.
And I'm not asking for you to comment on this. I'm very concerned about this. That's why I wanted to look at council having some kind of oversight on pilots, because it's very evident that the new hotel opened up, and they suffered, they suffered occupancy rate there. And I'm very concerned that is the City of Auburn creating an unfair playing field because of the pilots, the lucrative pilots who were put out there, and people are paying their fair share, are having a difficult time functioning because somebody else has an unfair advantage. Now, the new hotel, what's the value of the new hotel on State Street?
Um.
You say it was $10 million?
Around that figure.
And it's assessed for $800,000, correct?
They pay taxes based on what was there before.
So I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not, we're not going to be facing this as we go forward, because when you assess an income property or any kind of commercial property, it's based upon income and expenses, correct?
That's correct.
So that's how you place your value on it?
How we place our value on it, and a very small change in income can create a large change in value. A $10,000 swing in income is about $100,000 in value, roughly.
And in 2010, I see this as, the value's been going down, or at least you estimated the value, or Andy has, has gone down from 2010, the value on the property?
I would say it was stable 2010, 11. When it really started to manifest itself was 12 and 13. That's what the income and expense statements show. Now, they may have been able to, it seems as if for 11 and 12, they were able to stabilize some of their expenses. They made some cuts, from what I could see on their income and expense sheets. However, for 2013, through September, through the third quarter, there was about a 25% decrease in room revenue.
See, I'm concerned is how the taxpayers got to pick up the bill on this. We've got, we got to reduce the rate of the assessment on this property. So somebody's got to pick up that, you know, our budgetary, we made our budget for the year, and our budget's going to be at a loss because we're not getting the full amount on that. We're not getting the full amount on the full value of a similar piece of property that's in a pilot program. So we're getting hit at a double whammy here, unfortunately, to the taxpayers' business. And this has got to be something, it's got to be looked at, it's got to be stabilized across the board for us to move forward, because how many more of these are going to come forward? If we make a deal on this one here, is it the next one that's going to come forward, and the next hotel, and so on and so forth? So how do we, you know, stabilize ourselves so that we can build a budget upon the estimates that you're giving us, and then all of a sudden, mid-year, we're faced with another problem with another hotel or another commercial property that's going to come forward because of, you know, things that are happening in the marketplace? I have no problem in free enterprise if things are out there, and so on and so forth, but when we're given these lucrative projects out there, pilot programs out there, we got to be very, very careful in those areas.
Anybody has a right to file a grievance. Homeowner, businesses, if they own a property, they have a right to file a grievance. And typically, as we talked about in the commercial arena, it's based on the income.
Mayor?
Counselor.
I just have a question. This is, I understand what Counselor McCormick was saying, and this is a non-real estate assessor person asking, and I understand the pilot question, but this could have happened to this business regardless of there being a new hotel in town, possibly. Is that, I mean, I don't even know if you can answer that, Mike. I mean, it doesn't, it could happen to any business if you're not keeping up with the new trends and the whatever.
It comes a function of supply and demand.
Right, that's true as well, but you can't really say.
Oh, go ahead, Counsel, I'm sorry.
Well, you can't really say it's because there's a new business in town, and they're getting a break on taxes, that X, the other business is not doing well. The customers don't know that. They go to where they want to go, and they, you know, they book a motel or a hotel based on their needs and their desires, and that's why they go. So I don't know if that's solely because of a pilot.
I don't know if it's solely of a pilot, but it still, it adds to the whole equation that this company all of a sudden is showing a decrease in occupancy or expenses, or decrease in revenue, when a new business opened up that was helped up substantially by a pilot, so.
But before that new business was there, what did we have? An empty parking lot?
Jenny, Jenny Haines.
I'm not disputing that, that.
I know.
The things that happened there were fine, were nice. I just want to make sure that the city is not creating an unfair advantage with our, with the businesses that are paying the full tax amount.
Excuse me, Counsel. Jenny, would you come forward for a minute, please? Jenny, I believe you were around when the Inn at the Finger Lakes was built. Did they receive any incentives?
Yes.
Could you, without getting nitty-gritty, could you briefly outline what they may have been?
Sure, I can do nitty-gritty, too. It was in 1998 when the Inn at the Finger Lakes was built, and I know, just for a little h-. history of IDA incentives, the state sometimes allows IDAs to assist retail projects, and they sometimes have not allowed IDAs to assist retail projects. At that time, the legislation did not allow what was a microtell at that time to be eligible for a payment in lieu of tax agreement. So I believe they have a 485B, or had a 485B at one time, Mike, I don't remember if that was the case, but they would have been able to be eligible for that incentive for taxes. In addition, they received...
Anybody's entitled to 485, correct?
Correct. So I just, I just want to make sure that they did receive some of that. In addition, they are certified through the Empire Zone, so have been able to be eligible for investment tax credits, wage tax credits, and real property tax credits. In addition, for the acquisition of the property, they received between Kiuga County Community Development Block Grant Program and the City of Auburn Community Development Block Grant Program, $270,000 in reduced rate financing, below-market rate financing for that. So, you know, at any time, you know, the economic development staff is trying to provide incentives for a project, we bring to bear whatever we can at that time. So the new hotel was eligible for a pilot, the state had allowed retail projects like that, Plaza of the Arts, to be able to be eligible for that. As we sit today, as of March 2013, those kinds of projects are no longer eligible for payment in lieu of tax agreements. So it kind of depends on what's available to us at the time as to what we can bring to bear for a project.
Counselor Azika.
But if you look at it, it's simply, again, like our assessor mentioned, it's simply a matter of supply and demand. Before that was built, we, in fact, if I may say so, I think the market was supportive and at that point saturated. With the addition of a new hotel, the market is now glutted with supply, somebody's going to suffer.
I guess...
Okay, and this is the same, it's basically, this is a collateral damage of bringing in another business when probably the market didn't bear it. Given the fact that we had a climate change in the economics, the restaurant down the street here is another example, that restaurant failed because of competition, and competition led to cash flow issues and which precipitated other problems. So what it really boils down to is, what do we have here is what the market can bear locally versus what gets incentives to develop, need to be weighed to say, is this really growth, or are we just moving it from one spot to another? Are we going to kill this business in favor of this business?
I definitely appreciate your comment, and what I'd say to that is, the product at the Finger Lakes is very different than the product at the Hilton, they're different price points, different kind of customers go there, so I don't dispute what you're saying, and, you know, have they affected each other? I'm sure there's been some effect. But I also just wanted to share quick, I was at a meeting on Tuesday of the Tourism Board, and the Tourism Board has been, and being a promotion agency for our community, has been very diligent about getting our product out there, and they have hired a firm to specifically get into the meetings and conventions and group market. And that firm, in the last year, has booked 720 room nights that were not in our community before. So that business is either here or is coming in 2014. So all of the hotels should benefit from that. So that's something really exciting, that, you know, do we have too much product? I hope not. The Tourism Board and other, and economic development community is working to make sure that we have what we need for what's coming. The governor talked yesterday about the Bass Masters Tournament that's coming to Kiuga Lake this summer, that's very exciting. Well, to be on Kiuga, and then he's doing a fishing competition on Owosco Lake that same weekend, so really exciting. And this is, this issue is obviously very unfortunate for the city's revenue and our partner taxing jurisdictions, but there are definitely some exciting things happening that should be a benefit to all the hotels.
Yeah, I understand that, but again, like I say, the collateral damages is, what I see is, are we setting precedent here as to what Counselor John is alluding to?
Camardo.
John Camardo, okay.
He likes your first name.
But I see that, you know...
There's another Counselor John here, I just want, that's why I said Camardo.
Oh, understood, okay. Point taken. But as a matter of point here is that if you just look at his room inventory, okay, if a single hotel goes out, or a restaurant or whatever, because of over-market conditions, over-supply, that's still a bad thing. It's not, and whether or not it's recoverable, it may be, it may be the economy will turn around, things will change, that's possible. But what I'm concerned is exactly what was stated, is that is this setting precedent for other businesses to follow suit? To me, if I was another business and my income fell off, I'd climb on this bandwagon in a heartbeat.
I guess what I would say, the most important point to me, and this is just my opinion, is that this case was started in 2010, and they immediately filed after that assessment was valued at that time. So that was, you know, two to two and a half years before this hotel was even built.
I understand that. The drop in income was...
Let me clarify one thing, though, when we're speaking about specifics here, it was this past year that their income statement fell off, correct?
25%.
So that's where I have a concern with, because anybody can file any time they want to agree with you.
That's correct.
I'm concerned about the financial statement, because that's really what somebody's going to look at when they're appraising commercial property.
Yes.
Counselor, I'd like to bring us back, we're working on a motion here, and Counselor Cuddy, I believe you had something you wanted to add.
I just wanted to, just from my understanding of this resolution, I am going to take Mr. Burns' assessment or understanding that it's a compromise that is going, at least at this point, is in the city's favor. If we go to court, I think it would cost the city even more. And I also want to, I also want to state, what Ms. Haynes is trying to say is to think long-term, you know, what's happening downtown can expand, and as she mentioned, what Governor Cuomo is bringing to the area. And so I really think that this is, you know, we're working with FLH, and I would like to move this to vote.
Mr. Rossi, I know Counselor Camardo talked about tabling this motion between yourself and Mr. Burns, how will that be detrimental to us to put it off for a week or two at this point?
I think, I don't know that for a fact, I don't know if there was, Mike, if you were involved in the timing of the final settlement, I was not, but I don't think a week would cause any problems. I'd like, I'd like to, again, I agree with you that we should inform the county.
Well, whatever it is, I know that the article today, the county minister said she didn't know anything about it, and then I talked to two legislators, I at least think we should give them that...
Yeah, I agree with you. I was under the misinformation that that was done, but I would not think that one week, we can bring this back next week and confer with them and their attorneys and...
That'd be great.
Proceed.
May I add one more thing?
Go ahead, Mr. Burns.
I wanted to say that the compromise does not include going in, going forward, after 2014, 2015, we will be reviewing those financial statements again, and there's a little bit of everything in there here for everybody. If the income does go up, if the Tourism Board says they're selling 700 rooms and it's increasing every year, then we do have a right to look at this again, okay?
Yeah, this doesn't...
So it's not the end of the world, it's not stopping, it's not going on forever at this 2.1, okay?
The only thing that I wanted to make sure that the county was aware, because they're one of the taxing agencies, that was my concern.
Counselor Camardo, I agree with you, and I spoke with the chairman yesterday, he asked me a question also, but I just don't want this to be detrimental to, and we end up in court, and as Counselor Cuddy said, it ended up costing a lot more money.
I think one week would be reasonable.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to table for a week?
For one week.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion to table for one week and seconded by Counselor Azika. Please call the roll.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Azika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie?
Table if we can have this...
Or table.
Depending, I want to make sure, Counselor, with your permission, I want to make sure the county is well aware of everything, and also the school district, so everyone is on board with it.
School, there's no question.
Yeah, I think the school approved the resolution on it, I don't know what's happened at the county level, though.
Just want to make sure.
Has the school voted on this?
Yes.
They have voted, and they affirmed.
Yes.
Local laws?
None.
Cable legislation?
None.
Mr. Salvi, budget discussion, reports?
Yeah.
Under other business, please.
Step down. Please.
We're going to go back to other business, correct, after...
We are.
Oh, you're just, I'm sorry, for us, the council, after having...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Salvi, it should be that little icon right at the Adobe one, at the bottom.
Oh, at the bottom?
Yeah, right there.
Oh.
If I'm, oh, yes, it worked. I love it when it works.
What I'd like to do this evening is not go through all these charts, you've had them for weeks now, and they're really dated. Today or yesterday, you should have received the package of the actual data for the month of December, we'll put that together, we'll make graphs and presentation the third week of December. What I would like to do is jump to one set of graphs that we presented back in February, just kind of a calibration about the issue of where we're at with the budget, and then ask Mike Talbot to come up and go over his graphs in a little more detail, because we really haven't talked about the Department of Public Works in much detail, and he's got a fairly complex budget, so... This is just four slides from back in February of this past year, so almost a year ago, 11 months ago, when our previous comptroller put together some projections in terms of where we might be with regard to the budget. And I bring it up because we have some new counselors, some things have changed, and I think it's worth looking at again, because I think it's still relevant. This slide shows kind of a default scenario. We were early, early talking about the budget that we're, the budget year we're in today, and we'd asked our comptroller at that time to do some projections. The line on the top, the red line, is expenditures, the line on the bottom is the revenues, and there shouldn't really be a gap between those. If anything, we'd always like the revenue line to be above the expenditure line. But in years past, for example, in the very first point on that, that gap was closed with fund balance and some other adjustments. Going into the next year, we projected that there would be about a $3.4 million gap in this budget year. That gap was closed through the final action of the council, with about $2.6 million of fund balance, a million dollars of cuts, and there were some other adjustments along there to try to enhance the revenues a little bit. When we were also looking at this, there was a scenario, and part of this was actually implemented by the council, that included raising the limit on the gasoline tax, that's been done. This included an estimated 2% tax levy, the actual levy is 1.5%. This speculated about a hotel occupancy tax, something we've taken off the table, and that had closed the gap to the 2.8 million, which is very close to the 2.6 million that we used in fund balance, so tracking that, we closed that gap this year with fund balance. But you'll still see forecasting out in the future, again, expenses continue to exceed revenues. Now, to confuse you, the colors are reversed on this, so it doesn't look as good as it really is. This included a series of actions, a 4% tax levy, the gas tax cap being removed, which was done, a hotel occupancy tax, a wage freeze across the board for all employees, a million dollars in cuts, which was done as part of the budget, using 1.5 million dollars of fund balance. It closes the gap for an additional year, but again, the lines start to diverge, and in this case, the expenses are in yellow, the revenues are in red, and that gap grows into the future. This graph also shows what happens to the fund balance as it's utilized to close the budget gap. So you see it's decreasing down to a level there, because we weren't using it, or projecting the use of it to close the gap in these outermost years. And then the last slide is more onerous tax levies, 6% to 8%, the gas tax cap being removed, a hotel occupancy tax again off the table, a million dollars of cuts, wage freezes, some additional cuts, and utilization of fund balance a little bit every year. That brought us into balance, but it exhausted the fund balance, it had a very high tax levy, and obviously, while we could balance the budget, that probably wasn't going to be an acceptable scenario. I bring these forward just to illustrate that the problem still exists, it hasn't gone away, that we still face a major issue in terms of our budget going forward, and that while we're tracking fine this year in terms of expenditures by department, those expenditures do include about $2.6 million of one-time money that came from the fund balance that's not being replenished. Ideally, we need a plan to get us back into balance and to replenish the fund balance to a comfortable level and have a long-term sustainable financial picture for the City of Auburn. That's what I wanted to present, kind of as a big-picture overview. One of the things, and Counselor Camardo and Mayor Quill sit on the Audit Committee, one of the recommendations was that we actually do a strategic financial plan, that we take these kind of projections, we actually create a fairly robust model and forecast five years out, and that's something that's been on my agenda since I started at the city, unfortunately, we haven't had stability in the financial arena enough to put that model together, so... If there are any questions on this, I'd be happy to answer them, if not, I'll bring Mike up and let him run through his budget.
Doug?
Go ahead, Jim.
Doug, just so everybody understands, spin-up money, can you just explain that? I know most of us know that, but I don't know if the general public understands what spin-up money actually is. And the second part of my question, so I don't have to come back to it, is if we didn't have the spin-up money, we'd be out of fund balance now, we're working on the fund balance, or spin-up. We have about $3 million in unrestricted fund balance today. The spin-up money is money that came from the state through state aid. We normally get, well, whatever is normal, thanks to the state, we get $4.9 million a year, and that's been stable for several years. What they did was offer a one-time opportunity for 13 cities to take advantage of what they called spin-up money, simply for the state, because their budget year is different calendar than ours. They were going to advance two payments to us, we get three payments a year, they were going to advance two payments totaling $3.4 million. So we got basically an advance on money that we were going to get anyway, and we used that in the fund balance, and as you mentioned, part of that was used to balance the budget last year and this year.
Running through the scenarios, and I did this independently, and I wish I had brought it here, but, and then I actually confirmed it with a discussion with some of the members of the Audit Committee, is that if we go on the course that we're taking right now, and by all the assumptions, we're out of fund balance a year from now.
If we don't increase revenues...
If we don't increase revenues, and again, now, the benefits of the cuts that we did for the last two years certainly helped this situation. Had we not done those cuts, those lines would have been much more divergent. In fact, I found it entertaining that the local newspaper criticized the county for taking the, quote, "the easy way out," throwing the tax burden on the taxpayers, and not looking at cuts, and yet the prior two years, they put us to the... looking at cuts, and yet, the prior two years, they put us to the blocks, saying that we should have not done the cuts and never really gave any kind of positive solution there either. Of course, it's all political spin and sensationalism to sell newspapers, but that's all well-understood. However, the real crux of the matter is if we did not do what we did for the last two years, the situation would have been far worse and compounded.
Right, yeah, if you're looking for me to say it's true, that's true.
I'm looking for confirmation there.
Yes.
I just want to comment on one thing, if I could. It was brought up, and Mike, you're there also, that when the fund balance is going to run out, it's all depending on what's going to happen with this budget year.
Exactly, but I mean, if things stay.
If we don't touch any of the fund balance and have substantial reductions, then it's going to stay there for another, you know, how long until you run that down? But it's all going to happen, it's all going to be dependent upon what happens with this year and following years.
I understand that, so where the...
The burden's on the council, is what I'm saying.
The burden's definitely on the council here. I mean, the decisions by, that have to made this year's budget cycle are going to be very difficult, to say the least.
They are every year. The councils are every year. Councilor Cuddy, did you have something to add in?
No, I'm fine.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Salvi.
Let me get Mike up here, try to find your slides.
Well, thanks for the opportunity here, but what we'll do, I don't know what order these are in, so, obviously, they're not in numerical order, but, and just keep in mind, it can be a little confusing at times, because the x-axis is always going to be the same on these charts, but the y is going to be different, because each department has different, a different budget, obviously. Some to the order of 10 sometimes, so that's why when we do review these, just keep in mind, when you review the different bar graphs, even though they look similar, the left side's going to be different. So, what's that? Yeah, go ahead. But I don't know what order they're in, so. Oh, whoops. There we go. Went through it quickly. But we'll start with there. I believe that's the beginning of Public Works, and as Councilor McCormick said earlier, the most busy, we probably provide the most diverse group of services here for the city, and as a result of that, the most popular items on the city website are usually Public Works-related. So these are, these are some of the services that a lot of the community enjoys, so this is what we'll go through quickly. Yeah, I can do that. What I'll do is just use this right here.
Oh, you're right, okay.
So.
I went too fast.
Actually, no. There it goes. So we went from adult recreation, which is, really, that's a cost center that's gone through a lot of reductions over the years for various reasons, so, but really, what that covers is our women's and men's softball and our men's basketball programs.
Mike, if I could interrupt you. So it's a little clearer to everyone out there in the audience, and maybe even on the TV, if you can describe the difference between the actual and the theoretical, because to them, it's two words and two different colors.
Right, and we tried to keep that the same on each one. Theoretical is basically taking our budget, our total budget for whatever account that isn't dividing it by 12. So if we had normal distribution throughout the 12 months, that's what it would be. And, you know, if you were to chart the expenses on a normal distribution curve, you know, it'd almost look like a bell sometime, bell curve, but some of our, some of our Public Works services are seasonally related, so then you'll get your classic bell curves like snow removal, all the activities within probably five months, so that's what that in actual is, what we've actually spent that month. So that's, to clarify, hopefully that clears it up if anyone has any questions. So this is a little bit, you know, it's more expensive in the summer, late summer and early fall, that's when all the bills for the softball come in, and then we go into the basketball. This is our refuse collection, obviously, operating all the 12 months, and as the city manager said, they really took a beating the other day in the cold, but they got it done. So this covers everything we collect at the curb and garbage. Band concerts, that's one you'll see if we, which I have a different set of charts here, which aren't here, charting our expenses, and band concerts, obviously, the majority of expense is right in the beginning, which is the actual, and you'll see that bar for next month go down quite a bit. Celebrations, this covers all of our parades, any special events, Founder's Day, and that's also very event-related. So you have spikes, you have peaks, and you have valleys when you chart the distribution of those expenses. And just to summarize, too, all of our Public Works accounts were right where we should be. In fact, we're spending less than budgeted, so we're watching ourselves pretty closely. Buildings is one. We're going through some changes with buildings, because talking with the city manager, really, what we're trying to do is dedicate this buildings account strictly to City Hall, and any of the other outlying departments, including us at Public Works, Casey Park, Fire Department, Police Department, any work on their buildings, we're trying to basically assimilate back into their operating budget, so you can get a really a true cost of operating those departments. Because buildings used to be kind of a, an account that everybody could dive into for repairs at their buildings, even though they weren't here at City Hall. So we're still working on that. I think it's the most accurate way to chart how much it costs to run our departments if everyone's taking care of themselves. That's us down there at the Public Works garage. That includes our mechanics and the physical facility down there. Casey Park, this one's upside down, and there's a reason for that. You can see the blue actual is higher than the theoretical, and the reason being is we were, and if you look at past budget summaries, we had very high water and sewer bills for those months you see right there. So there was concern we had a leak, so what we did is went through every square inch of the building, pulled out the old plans, and to look for the leaks. Fortunately, the majority of plumbing there is above ground. The only below-ground plumbing we have is what comes into the main building, goes underground out to the filter house for the pool. Fortunately, that has its own valve, so we verified and confirmed that that valve is working. To make a long story short, we, it was concluded, there is no leak, what it was was a conversion error on the meter reading, so that was credited back to us this, so that'll turn, what I'm going to do is back into these numbers and do the expenses based on the credit we got back over the course of those months. So this will change next time we see that. And like the manager said, I just received December's budget summary in the mail today, up here at City Hall, so we'll incorporate that, and hopefully I'll have these current by tomorrow. Falcon Park, obviously, it's a majority of activity in the summer. We have our bills we have to pay in the winter time down there, but that's pretty much another seasonally. Cemetery maintenance, that's out at Soul Cemetery, the cemetery we own out there. Activity out there about eight months a year, even though there are winter burials, pretty much the majority of expense covers eight months. Solid waste administration, that's, you know, the folks responsible for making sure everybody's serviced with their, with their refuse and recycling collection, and making sure the landfill's operating. Parks maintenance, this covers a lot of different things. These people also in this department are snow plowing and doing whatever, you know, everything from picking up a branch to picking up a dead deer to plowing our roads and making sure everything's mowed in the summertime and we eat it. Playground operations, this speaks for itself. It used to be a really, a really large department, but times have changed, trends have changed, kids' activities have changed, and unfortunately, it's what's taken the hit are a lot of daytime outdoor programs. Disposal, these are the guys on the hill, and Karen and the scale house down at the landfill, covers everything from leach aid treatment to compacting the garbage and burying it. Recycling, this, and these AL accounts are out of the solid waste fund. We didn't separate it like that, because it does fall under us at Public Works altogether, so that's recycling. It's its own cost center, and that includes picking up the recycling curbside. Senior citizens at Schwartz, that, you know, they used to be staffed by a full-time person, now it's staffed by a part-time person. It's there on the first floor at Schwartz Towers. And it's a lot of confusion between that one and this one right here, RSVP. That's a retired senior volunteer program out of the first floor here at Boyle Center. So pretty straightforward, and if you look at the distribution of expenses, everything's pretty constant in these. It's, it's pretty steady from one year to the next. Signal maintenance, this is the, everything, this is the new, kind of the new effort we've had for our streetlights, and making sure we're properly, because now that we own so many streetlights, this is the department that takes care of them. So we've seen a big difference in this. We see less lights out for us that are city-owned. Public Works admin, that's basically me down there. Street cleaning, you can see we haven't spent anything, but what's coming up is to purchase a street sweeper here within the next couple of months. Now's the time to do it. It was included in the bonding that was just approved, so we're really excited about that, to get that out and have it operating for eight months out of the year. So everyone will benefit from that. Urban forestry, this is our tree trimmer, much-needed service. He also does snow plowing, does a little bit of everything. In fact, he cut three trees down today on Franklin Street that had to be removed for the new water main going in, so. He's also the guy that gets called at 3:00 in the morning when a tree goes down and it's laying on somebody's city tree, laying on somebody's house, so, much needed. Street lighting, the majority of this is electrical. That's for all the bills we paid at ICE to keep the streetlights going, in the parks, on the roads, anywhere you can think of, and the crosswalks and all that. Parks and Rec administration, basically, this person here, this is one person, but it, she does a little bit of everything, answers phones, financials, jack-of-all-trades, so you have to be pretty diverse down there in the office, and the two clerks we have down there are just, they do a really good job of balancing a lot of difficult, difficult scenarios. Street maintenance, these, it is what it says, but once again, we're so small down at Public Works, we're all pretty much interchangeable, and we go out and streets are working in parks some days, parks are working on streets, so we're all one big happy family down there. Whatever is needed that day for us to do, we'll do it. Snow removal, this is the one, you'll see some activity in December, the next bar graph, obviously, it's kicked in. See no expense up to November, so this covers everything. New plow blades, new cutting bits, salt, fuel. These are the water guys who are actually out in the field. That's, these are the guys that saved a lot of misery the other night with the main breaks we had. Unfortunately, all the snow melted right before it got bitterly cold, so there went our insulation, and so they had to respond, and they did a great job. Sanitary sewers, these are the folks out there that are cleaning sewer mains, installing some, clearing blockages, also assisting any other. They also do snow plowing, just like every department we have does, snow plowing, so if they're not working on a sewer, working on a water main, they're, in the wintertime, they're clearing our streets. And that's, I think that covers everything. Then we get into codes, which is not part of Public Works, so, sorry to go through it so quickly. If there's any questions, like I said, it's pretty diverse. I can answer it to the best of my ability, but, you know, we're doing pretty good down there, we're watching our dollars closely. We did, on some of our departments, you know, we got cut this past budget, so we're really having to watch our services line, so.
But I got to commend you, because even though the budget was a difficult thing this year, it shows that you made it work. So it's something that, it did turn out that it could be lived with, and like I say, I got to commend you and your team there, that you did a great job controlling your, and containing your costs.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, if anyone has any questions, don't hesitate to call us down there.
Other business, council.
I guess I'm up.
Go for it.
Thank you.
Councilor Camaro.
I was surprised to see earlier how easy it is to place something by a department head on the agenda. Unfortunately, that's not that easy as a member of council. Two weeks ago, I asked that the job description of the city clerk be placed on the agenda for this week, and that didn't happen, so I would hope in the future with our new council that that professional courtesy exists, and when a counselor asks to have something brought forth to the agenda, that's put forth to the agenda, especially with this situation, so that if somebody wanted to speak publicly about what job duties should be a part of the job duties description of the city clerk, that they could have an opportunity to speak on that. So unfortunately, that didn't happen, but I did ask that. I would like to have council have some kind of input, that a job duties description would be on hand. It doesn't exist in the city, not only to protect the city of Auburn, but also to protect the employee, whoever that employee may be, they're taking the job, that Debbie did such a well job, Councilor McCormick, I'm sorry, I'm used to calling you Debbie, did a great job for 13 years. So I think that somehow the city, the council, or however we'd want to go ahead and formulate this, that some kind of a job description should be on file, especially according to the charter, and I'd like to read a section in the charter that says, "The city and the deputy city clerk should have powers and perform such duties as prescribed by optional city government law and otherwise by law, and as the city council may from time to time prescribe." What's been prescribed over the years? Do we have anything on hand? It says, "This is what you're responsible in doing, and this is what the council thinks that we should have you do." It doesn't exist. I checked every other position that the city has. There's job descriptions everywhere, from civil service commissioner, which is spelled out very, very much in their handbook, and the responsibilities of city councillor and mayor is spelled out in the charter, so I want to know before we go ahead, and somebody's seated in that position, that we have something on file that states these are the responsibilities that you're going to be taking on.
Well, we haven't done in the past, council, and two years ago, when council members met with an attorney to try to decide what they were going to do with the city clerk's position, I wonder if anything was produced at that point, whether there was a job duties description brought forward. Not all members of council are invited to these meetings, so I would ask you to, in your discussions two years ago, was there a job description set forth?
I'm talking about now, mayor. As we move forward.
Counselor, I'm asking for the courtesy. This was discussed two years ago behind closed doors. Was there a job description formulated by the council at that point?
I don't know. When you hired a clerk, when you appointed a clerk, or whenever the city appointed a clerk, was there job duties? I don't know.
It was long before my...
Okay, so I don't know if there was one or not. I don't...
Personally, I'm not interested. I don't feel it's necessary.
I'm not going to debate that. I want to know how...
I'm not asking you to, sir.
Sure, okay, that's fine. I want to know how the rest of council feels, and I think that this should be something for us to discuss and formulate.
Mayor?
Counsel. Councilor McCormick.
When Councilor Rizika and Camaro came on board, they asked to meet with each department, and I don't, I couldn't find it. I prepared some, something in writing that gave you a description.
I still have it. You're just, basically, you're on take, but he's, I think, Councilor Camaro's referring to is that the city doesn't have a real policy here. So what I think he's asking for is...
A job description, yes.
Job description is a matter of policy, not... Job description is a matter of policy, not basically an interpretation by the person in, in that position.
But who else would you, I mean, I...
I mean, that's where you start with, but the policy needs...
And in the, the budget, there's a paragraph...
There was a description.
No, it's what the responsibilities of the job are. So, that's all there ever has been.
Mm-hmm.
And the job has evolved as the city has cut positions, a lot of, like a lot of the jobs have. So, it's absorbed a lot of different things.
Well, shouldn't we have something in writings that states that these are the things that are required of, of the person in that? Not only, like I said before, I think it would help that person, whoever it might be, say, "Yes, I understand what I'm required to do and these are the things that I'm going to follow," and so on and so forth.
I agree. I kind of agree with Mayor Quill. Last year, the job was going to be cut to part-time and nobody really asked what the job was at that time either. So, it's just curious that now we need a job description.
Well, there's a vacancy now.
Okay. Well, it's up to...
Counselor Cuddy, do you want to weigh in, or, I don't know if you're looking?
Well, I guess, based on past practice, you've already provided a basic list of duties. I think that that would be, that could be turned into some kind of job description.
So, is that going to come forward to us and be adopted by the council and added, or...
I would have to recreate it.
Does Civil Service have anything to say on this?
No. The county, the city clerk is, is appointed by the council. And I asked Doug about this. It's all up to council.
Counselor, I would say it'd be, if there were three members of council or more that wanted this job description, that would be, that would be the course we would take. If there's not three or more looking for this job description, then I don't see, I don't want staff taking time to do this. That's not going anywhere.
Well, myself and Counselor Ruzika, how do you feel about that? Counselor Cuddy and McCormick and...
Well, I, I trust Counselor McCormick's list of duties as a, almost like a template. If the next city clerk wants to go further with that, I would agree with adopting that. But I, I believe that the, the tradition of having a, you know, the list of duties and what's on the budget determine what the role of the city clerk does.
So, not having anything in general writing specifically is...
Well, do we, I mean, there is, it already exists.
What, with the paragraph that's in the budget gives the responsibilities of the city clerk.
Could you, could you, somebody get that and read that? Do you have a copy of that somewhere?
The budget, well...
I haven't got one, but...
It's in the budget. It's not, I don't have one with me, but it's in the budget. Did you get your copies of the budget yet?
No.
I can look up an old copy. Last year's budget?
Sure. Whatever, whatever's there. I think we should have something as a...
Do you have last year's budget?
Not on me, I don't.
No, but I mean, somewhere.
Yes.
Look under, it's right there, that paragraph summarizes what the city clerk does.
So, there's no specifics, it's just a summary?
There isn't, there never, when I started, I didn't, I, the previous city clerk explained to me what he did. They trained me and on we went. And he, he was trained by the person that had before him.
Who's, who's going to train this person now?
Colleen is going to train for the office part and I'm going to train him for the other part.
So, my point being, there's not going to be anything that somebody can go back to and say, "This is what I'm responsible for doing." Nothing in writing, other than a paragraph in the, in the budget.
That's the way, that's what's always been.
But that doesn't mean it's, it's the right direction that we should be taking, though. There's an opportunity here, there's a vacancy, and I think we should spend the time and do a proper job of formulating a job description.
I, I don't believe there's support for that, counselor.
Okay. That's, that's fine. That's fine. Second thing I have to talk about is, this might require Bill Lupien to come forward. I talked to Doug last week and I've been getting some calls about the manholes on New York Street that are way out of a line. The city has paved that street, spent money down there and so forth. So, could you give us some oversight on that, Bill, please?
There was several manholes that needed to be raised. The contractor wanted to use a product called Top Hat. It's, it's a, a rubber composite like tires. And they get bolted onto the manhole covers. So, now, the, would be the same grade. They've used them down in a, the New York State DOT has used them down in the Ithaca-Binghamton area successfully. We've tried them. A few of them did not work. What do you call it? Those, the contractor is responsible to alter all those structures back up to grade. We thought we would like to try that product because if it is successful, we could use it at other manholes in the city that have been beaten down and are lowered. And, and we could bolt these Top Hat product on the top of our manhole covers and what do you call it, increase the rightability to the general public. The contractor is responsible to make sure that if we do use a product like that, he's, there's a five-year guarantee. If they fail in the five years, he will come back and replay, alter those structures back up to grade at no cost to the city of Auburn. If, if some of the other ones that did not work, he's going to already have, what do you call it, plans to come back and alter those to grade.
Bill, how come our inspectors didn't pick up on this when they're installing a multimillion-dollar road and these things get, these things get left by the wayside and we have a product later on that might work or might not work. And we got a lot of money involved here because we did spend the money on inspectors. They didn't follow through on that. We got laser technology today should pinpoint those things perfectly.
Well, they were, what do you call it? They were out there. And all those structures were raised to grade before the top was placed. And then when the asphalt paving machine came by, what do you call it? For some reason or other, what do you call it? The, the manholes, a lot of them are half an inch to three-quarters of an inch low. Most, I don't think there's any that are over an inch. I mean, they're all, if they were within less than a half an inch, that's tolerable. They just happen to be in that half-inch, three-quarters where you can really start to feel them. I don't know why they, what do you call it? When the contractor was paving them, he just got to be a quarter inch higher than, or maybe when he was adjusting them to grade. And maybe he thought the black top was going to compact a little bit more than it should. But you're right. They, there is lasers. They do put those on the machines. We hit some of them. And there's probably 20 of them that we didn't hit. That has been very, you know, big topic of discussion between us and the contractor. And the contractor says, "Look, we'll be glad to come back and alter those to grade, but we'd like to try this product." And, and it's been successful in, in New York State, down the southern tier. And we thought we would like to try it here as well.
Well, if this product doesn't work, they'll come back and fix it.
At no additional cost to the city of Auburn. While I'm up here, if I could just say one last thing. You know, we are doing that Franklin Street Water Main project. There is going to be a big crossover that's probably going to be coming mid-week. Right now, we got to flush the, the water line. We have to chlorinate it. We have to do the bacterial samples. And if it passes, then we have the, the right to proceed. We're probably going to be working in the block on Franklin Street between Prospect Street and North Marvin. We will probably have flaggers out there, allow alternate traffic to go back and forth. Right now, we're shooting that. We're going to do a lot of the excavation Tuesday and shoot to start doing the crossover probably Wednesday at 9:00. So, that we will, and the town of Senate is prepared. They have enough water for three and a half days. So, it should not, even though we're going to be disrupting the transmission line, it should not affect anybody's water supply. But it will affect the traffic. So, if people could avoid driving on Franklin Street between Marvin and Prospect probably Tuesday and Wednesday, we will put it out on the website. We'll let everybody know as much as we can. But that's, we're shooting for the crossover to be on Wednesday. But it, it will interfere with traffic. It will be alternating. We will allow people, but it may be up to a five minutes, you know, stop there while they load up, you know, a dump truck and before they let them go again. So, you know, I just wanted to ask for people's cooperation, whatever they can do that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Counselor Camardo, you had the floor. You know, my own ask, Bill, a question. Bill, it was, it was on my list. Sometime between now and the 1st of February, closer to 1st of February, can we get a small presentation and update as to Franklin Street Water Project? Is, is it where we're going? I don't want it right away, but closer to February, if we could.
We're about a month ahead of schedule.
Okay.
We've got it all, the, the water line's already, the main is already tested from the Prospect Street all the way out to Seward. And the line from Seward to Quga is in. And that's being flushed and tested and that'd be there. The next section we'll be doing is from Quga up to the, the Five Points, North Lewis. Things are going great. And hopefully, once we get this crossover sometime this week, and like I say, we're shooting for Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday being the crossover, that could be off a day or two, depending on...
And, and we've had some discussion on this, and, and I know this was a number of months ago. But, some of the vacant building and the definitions here, I don't think it captured all the essence that we, we spoke, spoke to on that. And, and I, probably because of the, the time period or whatever. But, unoccupied for a period of over 30 days, well, if a house is for sale for that long, it's unoccupied. And you say one or more of these conditions can, can trigger this. There's some buildings that I seen on the list that I, I fully agree belong there. Just because somebody may buy, like if I buy my neighbor's house, he moves out and I maintain the property, keep the property in good shape and good order, pay my taxes.
Right. That, that was never the intent of that ordinance.
I know, but that's...
And they will not fall into that. We've got some discretion to determine whether or not the, the property is compliant and whether or not it's a nuisance.
One, a building made the list receiving these letters, which I went and visited the buildings to see. So, I think maybe these definitions need to be combed out one more time.
We can look at it. If you've got suggestions, throw them to me in an email. We have not sent those letters out yet. We're very close to doing that. As a matter of fact, I got the final copy back today. If there's a change that you'd like to see, shoot it to me in an email. I'll compare it against the ordinance.
Do you have a Word document filed this?
I'm sorry?
Do you have this in a Word document filed that you could send me?
Uh, I don't. Linda DiOrio has been working on putting it together to make it affillable. And what we're hoping to do, what's been taking a little bit of time is coordinating all the different people that are involved with this, getting people together at the right time, especially with the holidays. And what the intent was is to have all of the documentation that goes out in the letter available on the city website. So, if somebody makes a mistake filling it out, they can just go to the website, fill out another one. We've actually had several inquiries from financial institutions, mortgage companies, things like that, that have already contacted us because they know they have properties that need to be registered. So, it's moving forward. It's, it's hit a couple bumps in the road, but I didn't want to release this thing until we were ready to go with it so that we didn't get a lot of more complaints than we needed to have because of administrative problems on the, the backend of things. So, shoot me an email with your thoughts on those. We'll compare them against the ordinance as it was adopted. I'll consult with John Rossi on it, whether it's good to go or not. And, and again, the intent of this was not to penalize anybody that has a property that's just merely vacant and still looks habitated, looks, you know, looks good and is well-kept. It's to deal with blighted properties that are creating a problem for neighborhoods. So, we've, we've got some discretion in that.
What I'm going to ask is if I could get this in, and I'm assuming it's in Word, get a native file. I can simply turn on track chamber, track changes and comments, and I could send you a file back pointing out directly on the, on the file.
I'll see what I can do with that.
Yeah. So, it would be easier to do that way. It'd be, it's much clearer than to try and do a, take the PDF and convert it to what we're docking and do it. Not that it's impossible, I certainly can do it.
We, we fully expect there'll be properties on that list that come back that probably should be removed from the list. We fully expect that there'll be other properties that are brought to our attention that we have no idea are a problem until possibly neighbors decide that, "Hey, you know, I've got this building next to me and I don't see a placard on it or, or what have you." So, it's, it's going to be a live document. It's a, it's a, the system will be constantly changing and getting updated, so...
Okay. And, and as far as building a database of the, of the buildings, if someone wants to either add or challenge a listing, how would they go about doing that?
They'd contact the fire department.
Okay.
Okay. We're going to handle it on our end because the code enforcement was pretty explicit with that, that they're, they're challenged right at the moment, taking care of the stuff they've already got. So, we're taking this on. We've been inspecting vacant buildings for 20-plus years now. So, we're just expanding the, the scope of that project as well. They'd contact the fire department, and that information will be on the website as well.
Okay. And while I have, have you up there, on the, on the monthly, or the week, actually, the weekly reports, I've got a question regarding some of the activities. On your EMS calls, you list out, you know, of course, dead on arrival, cardiac, shortness of breath, and unresponsive strokes. The other ones, the other ones that make up the balance, typically, what are those? Seems like those are, become the lion's share of the EMS calls.
Could be anything. And that's a, a project that we're working on trying to deal with that.
Mm-hmm. So, if there's any way we can get, you know, more details on these EMS calls?
Sometimes we don't, we, we can only give out just so much information on EMS calls because of...
Well, I mean, typically, all right, what, what would be considered an other category that's not listed?
Not to mention the fact that, you know, I don't know how much detail folks want. You know, do you want to know whether it was a stabbing? Do you want to know whether it was a, a left arm break, a right arm break, a stick in the eye? You know, I, I'm trying to get this down to where it's informative for the counselors, but not so much information that it's...
I understand it. But, you know, again, like I say, it's just, it looks to me like the EMS activity with the, other than, let's, I'm going to pick on this one right here, which is for week of December, 1 through 7. You got 77 EMS calls. And out of this, it looks like there's, you know, there's 9, 11. 21 of these, which are defined, the remainder, which is, which is 56, which seems to make up the lion's share, fall into a undefined category. I mean, if we're sending, and I, if we're sending these on non-critical items, and I mean, I understand a 911 system is working on a medical priority dispatch. If, if, if it's because of a 911 issue, I want to identify it as a 911 issue.
We're, we're working on that. We, we've got a plan to, to move ahead with that and to try to weed some of these things out, to prioritize our responses. It's not something you can do with the flip of the switch.
Well, I understand that, but I was saying...
You can't just simply say that, "We're not going to go on these types of calls anymore." There's an expectation...
That wasn't what I was saying.
Okay.
What I was saying is they'd classify them so we'd know what they are in some kind of more, this is very granular, not, or very rough granular. I'd like a little finer granular. I mean, if it's, if it's a EMS call for, because it's, just happened to be a 911 call and you didn't really need to be there, that type of thing. What I see is a, and I talked a great deal with the 911 system, one of the people involved, and they say that they're working on a prioritizing system, one, I guess, 1 through 4 is what I gather it is. Where 1 is they throw everything at it, 2, 3, 4 is just basically your ambulance. So, if any of these that fall in the 2, 3, 4 category that we're being called out because of a 911 issue, that's costing us money that we really don't need to spend.
There, there's several approaches to that. We're looking to move ahead and move forward with exploring that. I'm sorry?
What's your definite plan?
There is no definite plan at this point. There needs to be discussion about it that involves the council, the folks that deal with EMS in the community, both first responders, the hospital, urgent cares, insurance companies, Medicaid, Medicare, the county who foots the bill for some of those things. The delivery system admittedly needs to be updated, but it's something that's going to take some genuine consideration and some time and thoughtfulness to do it right.
Well, I, I understand that. But I, like I say, if, if we don't identify that the, you know, or show the magnitude of the problem with a, let's say... you know, or show the magnitude of the problem with a, let's say, less than desirable 911 system, how are we ever going to get it fixed?
That's, will be part of the process.
Yeah. Again, I see that, you know, it's, it's great, these reports are, are coming in. Interesting statistic, the, the ratio of police call to fire rate now from the last November report is a seven and a half to one. Not that this is any kind of a competition, but I'm just saying, it shows the magnitude of, of the services that public safety is, is performing right now. And I think that's very important, that the people be informed of what activity is being done by our public safety that they're paying for.
I'm not sure what you're getting at with the ratio.
The ratio, just as a, as a statistic, I mean, just for my own, I like to say, do comparison. I mean, if you look at the police department services, they, they do break down their, their, their calls for service down to generic qual, uh, columns like drug investigation, fraud investigations, things like this. And when I see, go to the fire department and I see EMS calls, you see a few categorized and then the rest not. Well, these are all basically arrests. So if I want to globally clump, clump these together as arrests and only select a few have you hit arrests, it, it doesn't answer the mail. So what I would like to do is get that level, a little higher level of, of details as far as what the EMS calls. Again, to focus in on what I think is a 911 issue.
Okay.
And I got one other item, but I'll let somebody else take a, a turn.
Thanks, Chief. Anyone else? Counselor McCormick?
I've got a few things. One goes back to December. We, Counselor Cuddy and I were given tours of each facility by each department head and I, I wanted to publicly thank each department head that took us around. Mike Talbot, Vicki Murphy, Chief Nagel, Chief DeGert, Bill Lupien, it, these weren't facilities, but Doug Selby and Bob Goetheer gave us their tour of the finance department. And Vicki Quimby, I wanted to thank Vicki Quimby publicly because of my transition personally. She has taken care of me like I'm one of her own children, helping me through the paperwork of everything. And I'm really grateful to her and I wanted to acknowledge her. She's really does a lot of work for a lot of us, all of the employees. I also wanted to acknowledge Tim O'Brien, who I probably would never have met unless I was getting this tour. We met him at the wastewater treatment plant. He spent like two, three hours with us, gave us a tour, an in-depth tour. And it was on his day off too. He was going to be, have to work, I think he works the 11 to 7 shift. And he really gave us a great tour of, of the whole facility. It was like, we should have brought a tape recorder. But everybody treated us so great and it was a great snowy day to go touring with Mike Talbot through the landfill, the hills and the valleys of the landfill. That was beautiful, beautiful landscape. So I wanted to thank him for that. Then I have a couple of other things that are actually kind of maintenance or housekeeping things that I've, that are, because I was clerk and now I've got a chance to make it mine. These things are, the rules and procedures that city council has, over the years, they've been changed and amended and amended and amended. And I think, I've always thought that, that a new council should be orientated to the, to these because we, they kind of get handed out and you get busy with the real issues and you don't really get a chance to go through them. And I was hope, wondering if we could take a council meeting and really go through them, maybe, I don't even know if Counselor Camardo and Counselor Razika have had an opportunity. So we get familiar with the, the, the rules and procedures of how the meeting runs and how it's properly run. Right from the, how the agenda's put together, how a special meeting comes about, how motions are done, how things get tabled, how you're the chair of the meeting and how to get recognized by the chair of the meeting, those little details of, of meeting. Was that something we could do, look at, maybe?
As a matter of fact, I was in the process of looking over the current rules and procedures to weed out that which is antiquated.
Oh, great.
And to internally start to offer suggestions to the current, with department heads and with the mayor and then to be able to, and manager and then present it to council.
Oh, great.
To look over, to adopt a new set.
Okay.
Of rules and procedures and to make things more orderly. And, and I know that there, there have been many changes over the years. They have not all been updated in the current printed rules and procedures. And that's a project that I am involved with right now and will expand to other folks, including the council.
And the agenda too. I think we talked, I don't know if I, I'd forgotten to mention it, but the order of the agenda is going to, will change a little bit with the new, some of the things aren't going to be there anymore. I think the, the one that you always call it's...
Public announcements, I believe, not, I believe presentations.
Yes, one of those that we don't have anymore.
Proclamations, yeah.
So that, yeah.
Yeah, that'll be part of it.
Okay, great.
Those are in the current rules.
Yeah.
In the old form. Yeah.
Beautiful. And then, let's see, the other one was, as a new, a new counselor, we get our packets. I got my first packet this week promptly. I noticed that questions, I know that as a clerk, I came and I, council has questions, but then again, I also noticed that an email trail, it, what is the best way with questions to, to, if you have a question about one of the resolutions or the material, how do you prefer, Doug, that we, do we go to you? Would you rather that we go to, or that's the answer?
The manager is responsible for the agenda, so he should field all inquiries.
Okay. Then that's the way to go. I'll direct my questions to you and then you can field them more.
I mean, department heads are more than willing to answer questions too, but especially if there's, you know, a request to change something or, or something. And I, I always like to know if you find an error or mistake, so we can correct that.
But I just, it was, I didn't want to, I know they're done and I don't know, it just seemed like a lot and I didn't want to step on anyone. But I didn't want to step on anyone, you know? The staff, they're done and they're home and I did, I just wanted to make sure I was going along, along the right path through the system the right way because I was never in the loop. Everybody thinks the clerk was in the loop, she wasn't. And that was that one. Oh, and just the other was, I just want to state, and this isn't, it's a request, but it's a, I just, one of the things that I, reasons I ran for city council was, that, was the passion that I have for public safety. And I want to make sure that we don't leave laying around in public safety and taxpayers' money being wasted. And I think we're wasting taxpayers' money as we sit here and the clock's ticking on overtime and all the, the extra expense the city pays for people that are laid off. And I've, I've come to find out that even unemployment is an expense, expense to city taxpayers. So I'm hoping that things are going to be moving along pretty soon so that that gets resolved, the, the overtime, extra unnecessary overtime that's being paid to our, to, for fire department issues, things like that. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Cuddy, you haven't had a chance yet.
I, I also was very heartened by the welcoming workers of the city, the department heads, Jennifer, Christina, Bill, Bob, Vicki Murphy, Tony, Mike, Vicki Quimby. The, the last few weeks and December with Debbie was meeting the department heads and was very, was, I learned so much about the city that being a teacher at Huguenot Agabose's, it gave me some ideas to promote some of the things that a lot of people, a lot of the, the people in Auburn don't know how much goes into, to how the city works. And I've got a couple of project ideas for my students who do videos and, and, and graphic design. So they, that was very inspiring and I'm very glad to be on board this great team. And I also wanted to really specifically thank the, the, the DPW workers and the, the, the workers for the municipal utilities for braving the cold over the last few days. So again, Debbie and I both thank you for your, your, your hard work.
Counselor Azika? In regards to the procedures in the NICOM handbook here, there is quite a bit of thing that defining not only the taking of minutes, but order of business, general rules of procedure, guidelines for public comm, comment. This is all available in the NICOM handbook. So I would urge everyone on the council to get the latest revision, which is, is January of 2014. So that way, it's a great reference. That's in, in lieu of the comment that was just, you know, we just had it. There was really no guideline here. This is, this is definitely laid out very well in this handbook. Talks about open meeting laws, notice of meetings. It's a very, very good resource. It's a, it's a very large PDF. So.
Is that available on the website?
It is, NICOM website.
Mayor, excuse me, I think you gave us a copy of that.
Counselor Razika, are you, I don't want to cut you off. If you still have more, I don't want to...
No, that was, that was just a, a one comment and I have one other issue. Go ahead.
I just wanted to let Terry know that we, you gave us a copy of that.
That was one of the loose leaves that we made up, that Mayor's office made up for you.
In a black, was it in a black one?
It's a binder.
Okay.
Yeah, we have that. It, that is, we all have that.
Okay. So I was just, because the, the way you questioned it, it seemed like you said you didn't know what it...
We do, no, Peter, I didn't say we didn't have guidelines. I said we haven't gone over them.
Okay.
As a group.
Well, I think if, you just basically read it. I mean, it's there.
I, I do read it. I meant in public, that we could go over it in public. This is a public meeting.
But like I say, it specifically calls out the order of business, things like this.
Thank you.
But I have one other issue. And to me, as a, as a city council, I find it a little bit embarrassing. It was regarding the challenging of the, of the building permit for the, the theater. A letter was written basically saying the city has violated a general municipal law. And the distribution list went out to, of course, our corporate counsel, Nancy Er, if I mispronounce her name, you got to forgive me, Ozaro of New York State Workman's Comp Board, Gregory Duck of Fraud Investigator for New York State Compensation, Robert Menga for Budget Director, New York State Division of Budget, Thomas Denaply, State Comptroller, Ellen Bibbin, New York State Inspection General, Eric Schneiderman, the Office of Attorney General, Office of Charitable General, Charitable Bureau, Joe Martinez, Commissioner, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, San Chancellor Nancy Zifter, William Barzak, Council State University Construction Fraud, and Deborah Polinski-Dreschner, Managing General Counsel of Dormitory Authority. To me, it's an embarrassment that we got basically told that we violated the law here. A building permit was issued without insurance. How this happened is, is a question that I have. There's a scrawl signature on the front for the, for the owner that is illegible. I have no idea who that is. My concern is, is this was issued with a, a condition of five days. Well, in the law, there's nothing saying you condition it. If they didn't have the insurance then, he should have said, well, just come back in five days. To me, I find this very embarrassing. The city got a black eye here to have it sent to all these state and, and state offices there. I, I, I just, it's incredible. I mean, it's just, I don't know how to answer that. I mean, I, is, I, I just find it inconscionable that, that, that we were subjected to this embarrassment. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? I believe we're up to recap.
I have a few items. Counselor Camardo and Counselor Razika asked the city manager for background information on the radio payment proposal, along with a breakdown of the reimbursement from Sprint Nextel. Counselor Camardo asked the city manager if the city could set up a meeting with the county regarding the balance owed to the county for the radio program. Counselor Camardo asked Christina Selvik for information regarding the Dunham McCarthy site. Mayor Quill asked Bill Lupien for a small presentation on the Franklin Street Water Main Project sometime in February. Counselor Razika asked Chief DeGert for a Word document on the vacant building registry. Counselor Razika asked Chief DeGert if he could give a more detailed description on EMS calls.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Very good. Do we have a request for executive session?
We do, Mayor. We want to discuss union negotiations and a personnel matter.
Very well.
Did you want to discuss?
Yeah.
The property transfer.
Property transfer. This time I'll entertain a motion for executive session under those reasons. Counselor McCormick, seconded by Counselor Cuddy. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Razika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye. We'll be in recess for executive session.